I'd like to call to order the March 6, 2023 meeting of the West Bridgewater School Committee. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence? Thank you. The listing of matters on tonight's agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may be in fact discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and is being livestreamed on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. A recording of this meeting will also be made available on the wb-cam.org website. I would like to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining with the West Bridgewater Education Association, pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20A2, and to reconvene in open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We're going to go into a separate room, and we will reconvene when we are finished. You all sit.
Yep.
All right, is it?
Yeah.
Good. It's now 6:03, and upon conclusion of our executive session, I'd like to close the first March 6, 2023 meeting of the West Bridgewater School Committee. And in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 71, Section 38N, I'd like to open the public hearing of the proposed 2023-2024 school department budget. So tonight, we're going to review the proposed FY '24 budget in its entirety with Mr. Bodbo and Mrs. Grant, and have the opportunity to ask questions. As a reminder of upcoming dates, we're scheduled to meet again this Thursday. Quick turnaround time to vote on the budget. And then we are scheduled to present it to the selectmen on March 15 and the finance committee on March 20. So I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone for this opportunity. What we'll do, I'll give an overview. We have some slides, and then we jump into the budget itself and go through the entire budget, so all of it in mind. When we look at our budget, I think really we start with the mission. We're a mission-driven district. So the mission of West Bridgewater Public Schools, to work together with the whole community, provide our students a safe environment, with required knowledge, skills, and values, and with success and diverse in the global society of the 21st century. So we have a lot of responsibility. And with that, we need to provide our students with the best education possible. We've got great kids, we've got great staff, and we've got to support a few behind us all. When we look at the budget, there is certainly cyclical in terms of the budget. So we obviously need the town funding. We have our budget priorities, which are very important. We look at our district success plan. We look at our school goals, our teacher goals, our superintendent goals, and our district goals. We certainly want to make sure we are looking at the social-emotional health market, that they can't be in a good place mentally, and they can't learn. So that's super important. And obviously, achievement is very, very important. We want to value our kids' education. We want them to score and be prepared for the future. So everything really works together. In past years, we talked about FY '22 and '23 coming through the midst of COVID. Our budget was really essential. We were on the central things that we needed. And we were, I think in many ways, reactive to the situations. With this budget and moving forward, we hope to be more strategic and proactive. You'll see things that we've added by things coming into our budget through the regular general fund and also through ESAR, and we have goals moving forward. So we're strategically trying to add positions and programs within our school district that will be fiscally responsible, but also best for our kids, to keep our kids in school. The next few slides are some trends and data for West Bridgewater. I think these are important to look at. They have a lot of relevance in terms of our Chapter 70 funding, which has gone up a tremendous amount. But if you look at our high-needs students. Now, high-needs is defined by DESI, that's our special ed students, our EL students, and our low-income, economically disadvantaged students. So you'll see that for the, you know, going back 10 years, you know, seven years, the first seven years, we were pretty consistent. Around 24% of our students, so 1 out of 4 were considered high-needs. The last two years, not really three years, were up to above 36%. So now, 1 of 3 students that we educate is in one of those high-needs categories. The state has identified that thing, that you need more. You need more resources, and for our educators, we do. Students that are coming in have more needs, and that's great. We'll educate them. They're moving into town, we'll educate them, but their needs are becoming more and more. With that, so one of the subgroups are English language learners. We have over 60 EL students and FELs, so formerly English language learners, within the district. We've increased, and you'll see it in our future slides. We've gone from 1.5 EL teachers to 2.7. You know, in the 60s and nearing 70 doesn't sound like a huge number, but it is spread over four different buildings, four different schedules, and coming with different levels of proficiency. It's very difficult to schedule that. So, I mean, some of these students are requiring 90 minutes of direct services a day. So that's a lot of services. The next slide is going to show you our rise in special ed population. Pretty consistent again for a number of years, but now our numbers are increasing, and I don't see them going down. So when we have a rise in these numbers, we're going to need more staff. We're going to need more supports for them, both in district and out of district. And there's data to show that our special ed students and our high-needs students are not scoring as well as their like peers in the MCAS. So that's important to know. We know we always want to try to be better in MCAS, but proportionally, you'll see that there is a need for them to get more support so they can achieve higher. Our low-income students has gone from an average of about 15% to 26% in the last two years. Again, the trend continues of a big increase over the past two to three years. Now, are a lot of districts seeing this? Yes, they are seeing an increase post-COVID, but our numbers are substantially higher in many areas. Again, increasing the needs for our district. Next, we will look at our school enrollment. So again, a 10-year look shows that we are up over 1,400 students. We had a low just below 1,300. So there has been a slow increase in the numbers. And what we're seeing is a number of increase in students who are moving into town. With the buildings we have going on, we have over the next year, more than 100 homes being built. That's going to add tremendously to our school population. We've got an apartment complex next to Honeydew, that's going to be 24 units. That's going to raise the number of students in the schools. So proportionally, when we get more students, we don't more grow. We do add, we have added classrooms. We've gone from a single bubble to many bubbles. I don't know if we call it a lot of bubble, we don't speak any for it. But we're more bubbled than not now, meaning we have more five sections than four sections at the elementary level. So as we increase our West Bridgewater residents, well, naturally, our school choice numbers, we won't be able to accept as many. We'll show that later, but that's a significant, a significant impact on our funding. Because for every 10 students, that's at least $50,000 less. And we're going to predict way more, way fewer students coming into West Bridgewater because this growth is going up. It's been said that we're a town that has about 7,500, I think, residents, soon to be, you know, nearly 10,000. So the schools will be impacted. We do have some good news in terms of some of the trends. When you look at our school attendance rates, we are in red in all categories. So on the bottom left, you'll see our school attendance is much higher than the state average in blue. You notice a really big dip for both the schools and the state during COVID, but then we're back up now around 95%, 96% where we were. So our kids come to school. If they love coming to school, they do a great job. Our graduation rate is in the middle. Again, we are graduating a much higher percentage than state average. And on the bottom right, you'll see our dropout rate, which we are below the state, which is good. We have a consistently very low dropout rate, well under 1%. So the good news is our students are coming, they're graduating, and they're not dropping out of school. When we look at special education, we've always highlighted special education. About 1.2% of our students are in out-of-district placements. But that makes up for about 12% of our entire budget. So it's a small number, but it's a big financial number. Now, these are placements that they need. They're the best placement, decide them by the team. And these may be students who are coming into, moving into West Bridgewater, and we're responsible for their placement, paying for their placements. Not only do we pay for placement for our district students, but we pay transportation. Transportation can range from $150 a day to $400 a day. So that's $27,000 to $91,000 per student per year. So it's a very, very big part of our budget. And then when we look at out-of-district tuitions, we have kind of three buckets they fall into. Public school programs, so we send students to East Bridgewater, Bridgewater Rainham, range 35,000 to 40,000. Again, that's just tuition, tack on the transportation after. We have collaborative schools. North River-South Shore Collaborative, $60,000 to $80,000 per student per year. And then we have non-public-private schools, which could range anywhere from $65,000 to well over $300,000. As I talked about in the past meeting, we have, the out-of-district placements have risen by 14%. They're trying to lessen that amount. But right off the bat, that's well over $100,000 increase that we did not budget for. We budgeted for an increase, but not nearly 14%. So that only is the far right. The non-public-private schools are the ones that are up 14%. And we are responsible for these students from the ages of 3 to 22. So once they turn 3, we become responsible. All right, so funding sources, so school choice. The good news is, the great news is, that people want to come here. We've, I think this is the most, at least, I've seen in the last five or six years post-applications that we've had, 160 applicants. Probably the fewest spaces we have opened, though, unfortunately. And I tell you, being in that office and, you know, people calling, you know, daily once the springtime comes, it's upsetting because they want to be in school here. But you'll see that right now, we have, we budgeted last year for 285 students. We only have right now 264. A big part of that is, at the elementary level last year, we took very few students. The students we took, some of them were students who lived in the district, moved out, and then we counted as school choice, others were siblings. So we took from grades K to 6 under 10 students last year. On a normal year, five years ago, that probably would have been 30 to 40 students. We just don't have the space anymore. So most are unfortunate going to the middle of the high school. Unfortunately, that's where we have the space, we're in 7 and 9.
So I don't know if you were expecting questions or interjections in the middle.
Go for it.
I want to make a point that we are not choosing to eliminate school choice, but that we really don't have the space to accept new students, even though it helps our budget, and we would like to be able to do that.
That's a good point. Yeah, we are still a choice district, still are educating, all students are here, and we'll be accepting some, but not as many. So thank you. We budgeted for next year 260. That's not going to be easy to maintain, I'll be honest with you, because we have a large number of seniors who are graduating. We'll have spaces in grades, some in grade 7 and some in grade 9, but it's going to be difficult to get up to that 260. Again, school contributions. But if you look at it, you'll see that I'm projecting that our numbers are going to go down. And it may be still a bit too aggressive to say 30 a year. And that 30 a year, a five-year decline of that is about $600,000 difference. So that's, and, you know, I think the town has been very fortunate over the years to have school choice. It filled seats that weren't taken. We, you know, we had seats there, we had a teacher there. We might have had to buy some extra textbooks, or in this case, a Chromebook that they keep for four to six years. Other than that, there was no real cost. Now, and so therefore, we, the town has been saving its money, a lot of money. And it's going to slowly go away because of our residents. So that's something that we'll just have to, you know, get the town support to make up that difference. So when you look at school contributions, so the budget's divided up into school contributions, town contributions, and Chapter 70, sorry. You'll notice that on the left is FY '24. You'll see it's $1,350,000. The year before, it was $1.5 million. So that was our 285 students down to 260. So there's a decrease right there, but you'll notice that the overall number is actually up. The school department is still working hard to fund the budget. We're working hard to put as much money into the budget as we can, because the more money we put in, the less money we have to ask the town for. So we're working hard to do that, and you'll notice that every other category is up. Circuit breakers, money we get back to special ed students after they reach a certain threshold. Our revolving accounts are money that we bring in from surround care, evening school, athletic revolving, and then grants. Grants are significantly higher due to ESAR and other grants that we've actually gone out and worked hard to obtain. Our teachers, I mean, our administrators have done a good job trying to get these grants. So overall, school contributions are up, but school choice is down. So we're still working hard to fund our portion of the budget. So here comes some more good news. Chapter 70. Chapter 70 is the money by the state that they give. The governor starts the budget, you know, she's put out her initial budget to support the schools. You'll see our 10-year look of where we've fallen with Chapter 70. Now, it's increased over the years, some years more than others, but significantly the last two years. Last year, two years ago, we were up $744,000. This year, we received over $1.2 million than the year before, Chapter 70. Why? State recognizes that we need more money. State's saying there's gaps. They're seeing our high-needs students, they're seeing our population increase, they're seeing our overall population increase. Because you have a decrease in population, that hurts your Chapter 70. So 6.5 million total is the amount of money we get in Chapter 70. So that's a huge amount. The next slide shows you our $1.2 million more this year in Chapter 70 represents 22.6% increase. You'll see that we're way to the right. So we're in the maroon to the right, 22.6. Avon is a little bit higher than us, actually a lot higher. And then you'll see a lot of, some of the inner-city students to schools that have more high-needs students. And you'll see the schools to the left, more, you know, schools around us, kind of a lot less Chapter 70. So percentage-wise, when we looked at the whole chart across the whole state, West Bridgewater did really, really well. The same, I think last year it might have been up 18%, so it's significant.
Can I just clarify while you take a sip? So, you know, I'm thinking back, and you don't have to go, nobody has to go back. I'm thinking back to that line chart that showed the number of high-needs students, and really drastically, one of the charts that went up besides EL students is that low income. And, you know, in looking at that number, I thought, well, gee, you know, that could be COVID-related, of course. You know, we know people are struggling. But then, when I look at this chart and how, because we know that our Chapter 70 funding is directly, directly correlates to high-needs students. And so when we look at this, and we see how we fare compared to the entire state, we know that it is affecting us more. And so that's more than COVID. That's, that's, really speaks to the changing demographic of our town and to the changing demographic of our students, like the high-needs students that we have within the four walls every day that need to be educated.
I agree.
So I appreciate this graph because it really shows, it's great news that we're getting money from Chapter 70, but it's also, it really is more neutral news because we're getting money that we need and we have to spend.
Right. And you'll notice right in the middle is the state average, it says 9.6. So we're more than double the state average. So, you know, everyone's going up a little bit, but we're doubling that in our needs, and therefore, the money. The next one shows kind of what goes into the funding. You know, as you'll see, our Chapter 70 is increasing. The school contributions continue to go up. And then at the top, the extra-local contribution is getting, you know, a bit smaller. I mean, we'll talk about that. So I think that's a chart we've used before. Next, we're talking about per pupil expenditure. We spent a lot of time on this in the past, but I think it's very relevant when you look at where we're at with our funding and why we're increasing our Chapter 70. You know, per pupil is calculated the same way for every district in the state. There's no, you know, magic, well, there's a magic formula, but the formula applies to everyone. So they basically look at your revenue report, and they divide everything out, and they get a per pupil expenditure. The amount that the district spends per pupil using the whole end number. So when you look at what we, how we compare to other districts, when you look at us across the state of Massachusetts, over 300 districts, you'll see that, and now I will say that the numbers are updated up through FY '21. They haven't updated beyond that, and they, so they're a few years behind. But historically, when you look at this, FY '19, we were 23rd from the bottom. FY '20, we were 12th. And FY '21, we're 10th from the bottom. Where 97 districts spent more per pupil than West Bridgewater. So we're in the bottom 3% in FY '21. Up the top right, you'll see that our per pupil expenditure is $14,595 per student. The state average is over $19,000, which is a difference of $4,467 per pupil. If you wanted to do the math, you take 1,400 students, you multiply it times $4,467, and you get the amount we would have to, our budget would be if we add per pupil, the state average.
It's pretty far off from the state average.
Always has been.
We also then said, all right, let's compare it to the region. So we compared the 60 districts in our region, so we're southeastern Massachusetts. And unfortunately, things got, you know, a little bit worse. In FY '19, we were 5th from the bottom out of 60. FY '20, we were 4th from the bottom. And in FY '21, we were 2nd from the bottom. The only one below us was a K-8 district. And I should say, when we're in the 10th from the bottom in the state, really, there are two of the schools, the virtual high schools, which have no campus. So adding to us, even being lower than the physical campus. And then when you look at the per pupil, again, we're $14,595. And the southeastern mass region is lower, so their per pupil average is $17,500, but again, still just under $3,000 per pupil. Very, very different numbers. And again, just to compare things that, what DESI does, where the DESI assigns every district 10 DART districts, 10 schools that are alike or similar or comparable. When you look at the DART districts over the past three years of data that we have, we were the lowest, FY '19, '20, and '21 are all districts.
So these are the districts that the state says we are most similar to in demographics and money.
It doesn't mean they're all in our region. You have some western mass, some north of Boston, but they're, you know, and it's always interesting to look at them, but there's, they have, again, reasons why they're choosing those districts.
But yes, it is demographic-wise. It's taxes.
And we are the lowest among the districts that the state says we are the most similar to.
Correct. So again, that's where we just want to, if you put that out there. So just some historical data when we're looking at funding our budget. When you look at it, traditionally, 15% of the school budget has been school contributions, which are school choice, grants, and revolving accounts. It's come to about $2.6 million this year that the school itself is responsible for. If you took school choice out of there totally, it'd be more than half of that, it'd be about 7%. So it would be about $1.3 million deficit right now. So that's obviously why we're keeping the school choice numbers there. State funding traditionally has been about 25%, and that's our Chapter 70 funds that come in, funded about quarter of our overall school budget. And the West Bridgewater town contribution, so the taxpayer's taxes made up about 60%. So that's where we were historically for years. When we look at the past three years and including this year, you'll see that FY '21, here you'll see the overall budget, you'll see the percentages, and you'll see they go FY '21, '22, '23 across the top, and the proposed budget is FY '24. So just to look at the numbers, where they've gone, the town had an, in FY '21, was supporting the budget about 59.5. So right around that traditional 60%. In this year's budget, we'll be asking the town for 52%, which is a 7.5% decrease from FY '21 to '24. Chapter 70, this is where the difference comes in, goes, it was 25.8 to 34.1. So an 8.3% increase in Chapter 70 funds over those four years. Our school contribution has stayed pretty much the same. We were, did decrease by 0.8 over that time. So that stayed pretty consistent. But unfortunately, we're expecting that number to go down because the choice numbers will go down. So that's going to, that piece of the pie is going to slowly get smaller and smaller, and the other ones will have to get bigger.
Can I ask another clarifying question on Chapter 70? So Chapter 70, so that's, that's a pretty even, 7.5, 8.3. But when we talk about, and again, we don't have to go back, and we talk about that graph that has the multiple colored bars and how Chapter 70 is calculated, and the state determines we have a foundation budget that we have to spend. And then we have, we, depending on the quality of education we want to provide, we spend over that foundation budget. So if we are maintaining that and seeing our Chapter 70 increase, and then that teal bar at the top, that extra-local contribution, kind of stay the same or even decrease, we, the sacrifice there is, and I'm not saying that it's happening, but the sacrifice over time would be the quality that we're providing.
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right. So to me, it's more, I know we take in school choice, and we're doing everything we can. It was great to see our grants go up and our revolving accounts. But to me, it feels like, especially where we have to come down on school choice, given our growth, that we're, we're going to see the dam burst soon.
And I don't know if you have a slide coming up or not, but special education students' performance on MCAS for West Bridgewater is particularly bad.
I referenced that. I don't have a slide in here because there was a number of slides. I knew there was a bunch, but thank you for bringing that up. That is in the budget book, and I'll refer to that after because there was quite a few slides.
And it's an area where we know there's a group of people who need more assistance. We have an increase in the number of people in our town who belong to that group that need more assistance, and yet the performance is sliding. So I think that maybe we are seeing that dip in quality, and I think we need to take some strong actions to try and correct the course.
I agree, and thank you for bringing that up. Because what, what you'll see in the budget book for that is, in the lowest two categories, we have more students, especially in special needs. uh, we have more students, especially in special needs and high needs in those lowest two categories than the state does. So there's a disproportionate number there. We want those students in the higher two, not the lower two. And um, the budget book I'll refer to after, people can look at, shows that grades three to eight in English, math, um, and grade 10 as well. These slides uh show just some consistency. It shows um where the school budget falls amongst the overall town budget. So over the past three years, obviously, we don't know the numbers for this year, but over the past three years, West Bridgewater schools are above 39% of the overall town budget. Um, and you'll see on the chart on the bottom that most, most districts in the area are 10% of the town's budget. So significantly lower.
You know, I found this interesting when I saw this graphic when you shared it earlier. I know we always get compared to East Bridgewater. What's East Bridgewater doing? And we see here that East Bridgewater is spending 50% of their town budget on the schools. So that's, that's interesting to compare.
And I know they vary year to year, but this is kind of a snapshot from the time of that. And I think the consistency shows. So, you know, what, what have we done? Um, we, we've added positions. Um, we've added them through ESSR, we've added them through our budget. Um, we've said we need to add these positions, as members have said, we have needs and we, we need to meet those needs. We're, we're not, these aren't wants, these are things we say, oh, we'd love to have it, really be a nice. It's not fluff, it's things that we need. But you know, some of the things, we've added additional classroom teachers due to increased enrollment. Um, kindergarten, you know, when we had to go to a fifth section, in other classes, we had to go to a fifth, double class. Uh, we've added middle school high school social worker, uh, part-time special education teacher, a learning center teacher, uh, English language learners at the elementary and the secondary level. So that's, that's shown later as well. Speech and language, we've added in, behavior text, elementary and secondary. Um, we've added a cert, uh, CODA, certified occupational therapist assistant. Preschool teacher, a growing numbers in preschool. Uh, then we had to add a part-time preschool teacher and a part-time instructional assistant. We do charge for preschool for our playpals, but that money does not make up the difference. But we need to add those in because of integrated preschools. Part-time middle school high school school psychologist, uh, elementary instructional assistants, uh, part-time reading specialist, and our elementary nurse was increased full-time. Now, we know that ESSR funds are running out, so we, we are looking to try to balance things and um, what's the best bang for our buck that we can get? And if we have to move things around, we try to be fluid, so just because we add one thing. But maybe we might not look at things uh through a different lens, but the bottom line is we know we need to add more. And the next slide is gonna talk.
Mr. Bobbleville, what's a learning center teacher?
Learning center teacher, we have learning centers at the Rose Eladon and Howard. It's a place where students will go to receive more intensive support and then they'll go back to the inclusion model as well.
So that's special education?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. We have, again, future needs. Um, we need to look at, you know, other grant funding, and we are applying for other grants. We're looking for a grant right now for elementary adjustment counselor, we hope to get that. Um, but we need things such as special education team chairs, uh, elementary adjustment council, elementary school psychologist, additional special education staff, and potentially additional classroom teachers, um, depending on space. So there are needs out there for us and we're doing our best to fill them now. But I've said it before to other boards, and they said, well, when ESSR funds, you know, when they run out, what's gonna happen? So then we need the support, because these are positions that in general, we can just say, oh, now they're added, now we can just cut them. Because, you know, we don't no longer need, they were needed a long time ago. They were needed before ESSR came, um, and they're even more so needed now with our change in population. All right, so what, so what's, what do the numbers look like? And we'll go through line by line after. The budget we are proposing is 19,097 and 263, excuse me. Um, the first line shows the school contribution, so you take that off because we don't ask the town for that. So the 2.651 million is, comes off the request, because that's money we've put in. And again, that includes a bulk of it school choice, which gives us a subtotal, um, of 16 million. And then the uh FY 23 budget is the 15,000, 258,937, which is a difference of 1,186,585, which is a 7.78% increase. Again, that's a, that's a big increase. We understand that, we know that, and, but we need that. That, this isn't, this isn't a wish, this is the things that we've added into the budget, um, knowing that ESSR is gonna run out and we're still gonna need things in the future. Um, the good news is our chapter 70 increased from the state, 1,203,000 and 723. So the net change from what the increase was is understood, is just over, you know, 17,000 less. So this is money that's coming in to the town from the state. Um, we know and understand that it's always gonna be 1.2 million, we understand that. Last year was 744,000, we asked for 784,000, a net difference of an additional 40,000. The state's recognizing that we have needs. The state's providing uh West Bridgewater more money earmarked through chapter 70 to go to its students. Um, and that's what we feel, you know, fiscally responsible to present to you tonight. It's a lot, but you know, it's, it's needed. And then finally, you know, we're trying to make those, you know, where the money's coming from. So you'll see that additional staffing. Um, so these are new hires, around 250,000. Again, these are sta, these are positions that we're trying to pull away ESSR from and add these positions, which is about 1.6% of our overall budget. Teaching services, so these are the contractual raises, step and track, and our cola raises, um, which is about 3.1%. Our special education costs increased by 218,000 or 1.4%. And our EL services are around 123,000, those could be additional staff. And you'll notice that the special education, um, we're looking at putting a um, program with the Rose El McDonald, where we're hiring a teacher for some separate program and an instructional assistant. Um, this is in direct response to why we add the learning center teacher for the middle school high school, because in reality, it saves us money. Um, we can staff in district, which is best for our kids, we keep them in the schools. We pay a teacher, we pay an instructional assistant, rather than paying out-of-district tuition, out-of-district transportation. So if you didn't add the staff, then we would see that special education increase by hundreds of thousands of dollars to meet the needs of those students. Um, so again, trying to be fiscally responsible and thinking in. Down the road, hopefully, maybe we can even tuition in students into a program and start making the district, make the money back. Again, we, and I, I know we've talked about this at past meetings, when we talk about transportation, one of the reasons we wanted to get a transportation ban is to help lessen some of these costs through transportation. I can't say the amount, but if it's 150 to 400 dollars a day, um, that van will pay for itself very quickly. Um, so that just shows you, and then there's other net increases, we've had increases, sorry, um, in bus contracts, uh, service contracts, um, let's see, what else? Big one, three, so those, that equals out the total amount. And then just quickly, and I will repost this, um, we've, we've always, we've done these presentations before. And while I hope they're informative, we also want to put a narrative behind it, so we created a 26-page budget book. Um, it looks like, it looks like this. It's got a lot of the same charts and graphs and so forth, but more of a narrative to go along with it. Um, it's a place people can go and read and look for information, um, if it is helpful, so you look at our budget. So next, some grants can help us go through.
So through the line by line of discussion, what we've done this year. The chart on the, worksheet on the wall is the summary, top sheet, so that summarizes the major categories. This is what the town, uh, meeting's in the budget book that town is meeting. So I'll just briefly hold for the summary sheet. It shows the fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22 actual numbers that we spent, and then all write on the budget. The fiscal year 23, which we're in right now, the budget that was approved last year at the town meeting. Our twen, our fiscal year 24 budget request from the town. The number of ETS we expect to have in 24 that we budgeted for. The difference, and it's budget to budget difference, with a dollar amount and a percentage. And then we detail the school contributions, which Mark discussed as the different sources of funding that we've provided to the budget, and that shows what line items we applied to. And then we have the total school budget that includes our school contributions. So I think we'll use the same process that we have in the prior years. We'll go through starting on page one, 33. And we'll add a tiny bit of narrative, but we're not gonna read what is on the page. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. School committees, path, have remained flat. The next page is the superintendent's office, and this just includes contractual increases. The business office and legal services are on the next page. Contractual increases, you see a decrease in this line, and use additional surround care funds to offset this. The fourth technology, district technology, represents what appears to be an enormous increase. It's really just moving the district technology, the director's technology, from the middle, senior high school teachers line into a technology line. We had an MOA with the contract in order to move that position out of the teacher's contract and into a district position. Data processing continues to go up. Significant costs are, for data processing are provided to us by the town, we share costs with them. Page five, and it details the costs of principals, their secretarial staff, as well as some of their office expenses. Then pretty much contractual. Teaching services, the bulk of our non-special ed teaching services fall on this page. So it, you know, as you can see, there's 1, 1.3 million of the cost of our high school teachers is our funded through school choice. In other words, again, the majority of the costs are contractual. The, the supply and et cetera, that needs to be looked at in total when it's done, that's what we're looking at. We did decrease substitute by the budget for substitutes. Uh, we just feel that it looks like we will get fewer long-term subs coming up next year. And in addition, the new, um, teacher's contract allows us to set a long-term sub rate between 150 and 275 dollars a day, more in line with other districts where teachers at different, in different specialties have more or less expensive today. The data to professional development costs, we, we budget it the same as in previous. Instructional supplies, this category makes a building budget, which the building principals get discretion over. You know, each year, they take a look and say, okay, we don't need more tax codes, we need more software, we need more supply, et cetera. So this needs to be looked at in total with the principal's expenses, instructional supplies, instructional technology. You, you, this line, when you pull all those pieces together, it's on several pages, has remained flat at 230,000 probably the last five years. This year, we've increased the funding by 30,000 dollars to cover the cost of additional curriculums we've purchased as necessary to meet state required requirements and guidelines.
I think that's important when you look at that 126,000 of other, that 30,000 is probably the rest in the rest of the math. Now, we got a grant for it, so we just gotta throw it to the grant, you know, work with the education team, the principals. Uh, got the grant for the funding, but now we have to pay to give us high-quality education to our kids, and it costs money.
Yeah, every year, you get other subscriptions. Page 10, the instructional technology, which again, a portion of falls under the building budget. Tech maintenance is a significant line item, we offset that with choice money. Again, um, a majority of the cost of tech maintenance is prescribed by the town. It went up 10,000 dollars this year. It's for the network costs, we need an outside company to have technologies that really monitor the, the network. So that is a significant cost, the school just pays 55% of that cost.
55% of the entire town.
Yeah. The next page is the guidance of testing, contractual over the. We added significantly less choice funds, since the choice funds are dropping. In previous years, we have offset the cost of council lines, 60,000 dollars of choice money. This year, we need to clear. On the next page, we see the significant increase in the English language learner category. And we now, as Mark mentioned in his presentation, went from 1.5 instructors to 2.7. This also includes a slight portion of supplies. Health services is contractual for the nurses. Uh, we did increase the Supreme Street nurse to full-time for next year. Um, 25% for salary, the, the 25% of the salary is funded by a health grant, and we secure, and that's significant.
It is, that's a 30,000 dollar grant till 2029. We've got that, so again, more, more grant funding to help us.
That's great.
The next piece is transportation, this is regular education transportation, including the McKinney Vento, which are the homeless, transportation that we're required to provide. The most significant increase has been in the McKinney Vento transportation. We've just seen those costs easily double this year, and we expect them to remain high next year. Our bus services provided by the senior, we negotiated a new contract for this for a year of 23. They held the increasing cost play from 22 to 23, which is significant. Um, so there's an increase of 7%.
And the increase in McKinney Vento, is that due to the increasing number of students that would require it? Or is it, okay, so it's.
It's a combination of increased transportation costs, limited transportation companies that, that transports students. So there, the transportation for McKinney Vento students can cost as much as special needs students. They're using similar vans, so.
And they go to these unexpectedly expensive, like a move-in, but also homeless students. We, we cannot possibly budget for this, so they come, you know, students become homeless or move out. Um, we're required to pay the transportation, so it's, yeah. Unlike many budgets, the school budget is very fluid, you know. And it's going a lot more than you ever anticipated, so you don't know.
Yeah, and it's people that we wanna take care of, so.
And this is, and this is where we would really see the benefit, um, that savings almost immediately if we had an, a, a van that we owned.
I agree, yeah. And I think that's, we are down the road, again, if we can have one, start with specialization. I think it's, you know, as I said to the board, it's like, we don't like getting into the transportation business, but I think we can, you know, certainly benefit by having a van or two to help us.
Mrs. Grant, I had a note that we, um, in years past, had about 725 students using the bus. Is that, do you? Is that, do you know, is that, is it on track? No. Yeah, I was just wondering if the trend was going that more people, like, is it steady or less bus students?
I didn't say that it's steady because we're pretty much the same number of buses.
Buses and kids on it.
Unfortunately, whether it's one or 55 on a bus.
We could do for it, yeah.
The town, although it's how big, we need the number of buses to
Sometimes the parent pickup line indicates
I know, we want one pickup, you know?
Not too many kids are using it.
They can ride still spot unbuses. Students can ride from a system bus stop.
Gotcha, okay.
The next page is sports and active personal activities. We've significantly increased the school contribution to help offset the cost by about $15,000 additional. The next page is distribution services. Contractual, supply costs have increased significantly as we've seen across the supply chain. We also paid 4.5 of a DPW worker for the grounds.
That's 0.5 or 4.5?
0.5, yeah, no. 0.5 is enough.
So what is the 0.5? What do they?
Yeah, it's about $27,500 additional.
Which we are the town department that does pay. And they do a great job, whether it's the
But why, why are we the only town department that pays?
I think it was a agreement made many, many years ago. But I think, I'm thinking like 10, probably like 15 years ago. And they do mow the lawns and they do pave, I mean, they do plow and so forth. We are town building, town ground services. It's just, you know, this percent, 7% would, you know, keep you to about 3% if that wasn't in our budget.
The next page, the heating. Again, I'd have to be based on previous year's bills. The electric utilities, same, same thing based on previous year's bills, as well as the town sent around a note telling all departments to increase early last year about 5%. From the previous year, from the previous budget, everything is compared to budget. So if you're on with your previous year's budget, you're going to be good for the following year because all the changes are being set. Some of the phone tiny decreases, the highlight decreases. The school department and town have really gone through the phone lines that have existed and they're eliminating any lines that are no longer used. So we are seeing some reasonable savings out there.
That's awesome. Save where we can.
Exactly, smaller. The next is maintenance of ground, waste removal. Maintenance of buildings is another category that we really need to take a look at in terms of the bottom entire line of it. Because it's hard to distinguish at times between what is a horizontal element service, what is a heating fix, it's obviously pretty self-explanatory. But within the heating system, we also sometimes have to hire an electrician. So I find it most useful to just really concentrate on the bottom line. This is almost 27%, which is $19,500. Not significant dollars in terms of wages I worked before. But as a side note, to date, given our old buildings and, and unfortunately, some of the boiler issues you get here at a high school, we have already spent $125,000 in this category as of the end of February. That building improved the repairs to the roads on the ground before the tree and the wires went down. So this is a really difficult area to predict and it's becoming more and more expensive.
I think that's probably part of the reason why the state selected West Bridgewater to proceed with the near schools.
And we have, you know, three buildings that are 60 years old. We have over 250,000 square feet of living space that our students and staff occupy. And we occupy over 50 acres of land. So, you know, that's, that's hundreds of homes, put it that way. So in grand scheme, it's not a lot of money in this line for all the, you know, HVAC mechanisms, lighting and so forth. But it's a, again, it's unexpected when a tree falls across the line and it's cut and we have to pay to fix it or pipes burst and so forth.
So can I just ask as an aside for fiscal year 23, we're already over by about 50,000 and it's only February. Are we going to be okay in term?
I don't know yet. No, that's a rather disconcerting number of, of overage. What we're down to is having to swap out additional ASR funds for other, other items to pay for. The next page, maintenance of equipment. This really highlights our service contracts, which have increased significantly just year to year in terms of cost, everything has gone up with inflation. But we also added a new contract to cover the boiler and HVAC at the high school. And I think, and we might extend to some of the other schools, and that's about $12,000 a year. It's our maintenance fee, it's money well spent, will be to hopefully head off some of the issues we've had with boilers and HVAC. And then we have the security system for visitors entering the schools. Insurance, I talked to the town, find out they handle the insurance policy. We got a good number from them. Previously, you can, from COVID, in this year, we are pointing through unemployment claims that have kind of dragged down and they do, even if someone has ever laid off from a different business, if they worked here for a period of time, we have to pick up a portion of the cost. So that's why the number was higher than previous. The next couple of things are not funded, which is not a breaking budget. The regular day out of district transportation, this is for our Aggie schools. So we have seven students attending Norfolk Aggie right now, one graduating, but we have, people have applications in for Norfolk Aggie personnel.
And the school, Plymouth County schools, districts pay a premium. Each Norfolk Aggie is $26,500 and Bristol is $22,800 because we don't have, agricultural schools are within our county. So in district cost is under free download laws.
So if anybody wants to open an agriculture
So I know you guys have a pretty good pulse on applications and who's going, who's graduating. Is there a chance that this could go more than seven?
There are deadlines. They have, they have deadlines and after that they have to get super tenant approved. So we build it on, using that deadline.
Special ed administration is a contractual service. This is special ed teaching services, so we have an indication for teachers. You'll notice that we have significantly funded some of these positions with ASR money. And there's a lot of decreases and higher increases for special ed instructional assistants moved with the children, with children that they have a one-to-one with. So there's a lot of shifting between buildings and the budget is organized by building. Additional teaching services for special education. We've seen a slight dip, we've seen, but we have increased the school contribution.
So in the areas of high need students, we noticed that there was an increase in funding for ESL and an increase in the number of students, which makes sense. And we have an increase in the number of students in special education, yet there's a slight dip here in the funding. So it doesn't seem to match what we need to do in order to make sure that we're keeping up with the needs of our population.
We just have to be careful, we're a small district and percentages aren't always the best way to look at it. I mean, we have significantly increased just between transportation and out-of-district cost by 218,000 for special needs students.
But in terms of staffing, that's why we're constantly having discussions with the director and the principals saying, where is the best need, calibrating things that are outside of the, you know, outside, you know, consultants and bringing them in-house and things like that. So, and also doing additional training for staff, our IAs, training them into the RBT. So we can get kind of a dual certified person using professional development time that will kind of address those needs, but using the current staff that we already have. And try to think a little bit differently rather than the, you know, dog model.
Yeah, not just looking at numbers, but thinking of the, the real impact. And we don't want to end up having students that are going out of district because, as you mentioned, that gets a lot more expensive.
Totally agree. And that's why I think that sub separate, although it's, you know, it's not, it'll serve as a smaller population of students, but there'll be resources there within that sub separate program. And I think we'll, we'll need more sub separate programs, maybe at the younger levels in the future. Again, like you said, to save money so we're not sending kids out.
Yeah, and really it's, it makes more sense to serve people closer to their home, give them the education that they deserve, and that's required by federal and state law, closer to where they live, rather than putting them on a bus and sending them to a town 30 or 40 minutes away.
And I think we've always had the discussions, if, if there's a need that arises, then we're going to just try, we're going to add the staff. We're not going to wait till the next budget season because, you know, we're at X amount. If we have needs to have to net, then we're going to try to figure out if we move or if we have to add. Like a boiler that goes, if you've got a student who is in, you know, in trouble for whatever reason, we're going to get staffing for that person. So it's, it's not anticipated, it's unexpected, but we have to do what's best for kids.
Yeah, and we want to make sure that we're not decreasing the ratio of teachers and staff to students that we already know about that have finance.
And that's why some of those in the slide, my list of things that we had in the part-time, I went from part-time to full-time at the Howard School, the learning center teacher. Additional instructional systems are included in there. But good points, thank you.
And he had, and yeah, defer to Kathy, but she's spent a lot of time this year going to different districts to really start to think outside of the box on how we structure our special ed programs and where we can move around. And moving things around, you can see is common, like the negatives and the increases, to really get, put together the best program for our students. So always in the numbers, it doesn't look like maybe you're getting what you think you need, but if you look at it in total, total, I'm confident that we can put together a program to really address them. The next page is the psychological services area. Here we've added a social worker and a point six social worker and a fully funded ASR social worker. As we've discussed, special ed education transportation, it continues to increase. We're showing 23% increase this year, but we're also significantly funding it with certificate. We purchase some special education equipment. And the final page is the, the, I mean, out-of-district tuition. And given that we have budgeted for a sub separate classroom, we have appropriately decreased the level of tuition where we feel we will get, see something, the ability to see soon our desperate. So that's reflected as a decrease in that tuition line, but we have an increase in any questions?
So I'm going to ask you the same question I asked last year, because I trust you and, you know, you are very wise with the, with the, with the numbers. Is it enough to meet our needs?
Well, I think it is a realistic budget. I don't have padding in here. There are a lot of areas that we discussed that are, you're unable to predict and estimate. We have four high need students who need outplacement, move into the district and we're significantly over budget. But I think, given the facts we know now, I think it's conservative and realistic, really realistic. It's a lot.
I agree. And I think it's, you know, you can look at the percent, you look at the bottom line, it's a lot of money. But there's nowhere in there that we say, oh, this is, this is nice to have.
Yes, on a wish list.
Yeah, it's not a wish. And we've identified things, more things that we need, knowing that ASR is running up. And I think the data shows that the state's saying, we, you know, we need more and they're giving us more. Our per pupil is low. And again, I acknowledge that we're a couple of years behind, so we got a good increase last year. But it's less to do with the money, it's to the needs of our kids. That, to me, that's the biggest thing. We're not walking through schools saying, wow, we have, we have, you know, extra coaches here and extra people here and, you know, the bodies are needed. And that's what's going to provide the best education for our kids, other people.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all of the hard work and effort that goes into this budget. It really shows all the time and effort that you put into it and we appreciate it, yes. And I think it's great that, you know, one of the measures is that we do have so many school choice applications. So that means families want to come and send their kids to our schools. And, and I am also grateful that the state recognized our needs and, and did put that significant increase in the Chapter 70 money, which definitely will help. But as Mrs. Dragonetti said, it's kind of based on our needs, so it's kind of a neutral win, but it's good to see.
Just to point out that this is the governor's initial budget. It does have to do with the House and the Senate. And I've talked to Senator Timblety about this. Usually if anything, there's an increase in it and I think it's pretty solid. So, but it's not a fully approved state budget at this point.
So we have an, an increase. And is it going to be an amount that's likely to get us off of that last place position for our Dart schools and, you know, are we on a path to move away from the bottom of the state?
I would think so, because I mean, when I look at it, the last year that they have our state data right on the BESC website is FY '21. So I think in, you know, '23 and hopefully this year, we'll have very significant increases. So I think that will, you know, significantly move us in the right direction.
Yeah, the, the pattern before then was pretty bad, it was downward.
Yeah, and I think that, that hurt.
We need to turn that around.
I, I've said it before, even like districts that are not significantly higher than us in the local area, even a $400,000 change in per pupil equals about $750,000. So we don't need to be in the average. We just need to be there to properly fund us.
Great, thank you. You all set?
All set, yeah.
All right, so it's now 7:10. And upon conclusion of the fiscal year 25 budget presentation, I'd like to formally close the budget hearing. And before I reopen the regular school committee, do we need a break at all or we?
Could use a restroom break.
Take a five-minute break and we'll be back.
All right, it is now 7:18. And I'd like to open the second March 6, 2023, meeting of the West Bridgewater School tomorrow, School Committee. As a reminder, the listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by, by the chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. First up, we're going to introduce our student rep, which is Ms. First up, we're gonna introduce our student rep, which is Ms. Maddie Ellis. Thank you so much, Maddie, for being here and taking the time out of your busy schedule as a senior to be our student rep. And I think you're actually filling in, so thank you for your flexibility in coming at last notice, late notice. And next is the approval of minutes. I'd like to make a motion to accept the February sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion about minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Superintendent's update, Mr. Bodwell.
First, just school choice, I didn't mention a lot of that, but I'll just quickly go through. The application period is over, so we are still taking eight applicants for school choices, going to a separate pile. Like I said, we had a hundred and sixty applicants for, you know, CADA, twelve potential spots. We will decide what spots are open depending on enrollments in each grade. And we tend to try to weigh slants to camp. We also don't want to miss a window to invite people in. As I said before, we currently have two hundred and sixty-four school choice students. I asked about it last week. Budget for two sixty. And declining choice numbers as well, certainly affect that budget, so something to be concerned about. And I do know there's a little opportunity that we've gotten rid of school choice, but we still are a school choice district and still accepting students, but will open to grade levels as appropriate when we still ask. MSPA?
Yep.
All right, so, I, MSPA, so just update you. You as a committee had approved my submission for the statement of interest and speech in court selectmen do as well. So I'll need to submit that by April thirteenth on their online portal. We do have a meeting scheduled this Wednesday. Mr. Boone will be there, Mr. Gagne and Mr. Kinnahan. They get some more information as we begin the process. Our eligibility period opened on March first. There's some dates up there of things that we need to accomplish, so this is why we're reading to get more clarification on this. But the initial compliance certification is due by the end of the month. The school building committee needs to be submitted by May first. The educational profile questionnaire is May thirtieth. Online enrollment projection, May thirtieth. And, and see executed on the end of August. Same thing with the maintenance and capital plan, the end of August. And then we'll be having our vote by November twenty-seventh. So we're looking at most likely a special town meeting, probably late September, early October, the town feasibility. So certain timelines and things that we need to accomplish. I think one of the most important things now that I'm starting the process and doing and reaching out to people is the school building committee. I believe in the middle senior high school project, they did a great job and a very diverse membership in this committee, and I'm hopeful the same. Mix of school personnel, town personnel, people with expertise in the area, I think it really helps the whole process. I go back to our district plan for success, and we had thirty-one members, and I felt that it was very manageable, so we'll see. But I will be looking with two, up to two school committee members to be part of it. We can decide in April, but I think people would like to volunteer their time. We'd love to have you.
Sounds good.
Well, it's not his official, it's, after you get to sitting right up there. Not his official last meeting, we know today, but it's your, like, last official one, you know, maybe a lot of people here. So, you know, here we want to thank you for all your service, your years here with us. Being a student, being in the schools, knowing you for so long, it's been, it's been my pleasure. You've helped the committee tremendously, and we know it takes a lot of time for all of you, so thank you for all your, your efforts. Thank you. We have a whole, I'll read it to you, it says, the West Bridgewater, would you like to read it?
Oh, sure. The West Bridgewater School Committee and Superintendent would like to thank David Yo for his years of service to the students in West Bridgewater, presented on March sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you so much.
And I'd also like to just personally thank you as well, David, for your three years of service to us and the school committee. And since the majority of your term was served under COVID, we certainly had our challenges, but throughout it all, you maintained very cool under pressure, so we appreciate that. You brought great, great perspective to the committee, having been a graduate of our schools. Your time and dedication are greatly appreciated, and you'll be missed, and I, we wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Just quickly, I'd like to thank everyone, from past members to current members, administration staff, faculty. As Donna Lewit, I graduated from West Bridgewater ten years ago. And, you know, it's, I always find that West Bridgewater School is a special place. From the teachers, faculty, staff, like I said, I'd put them against anyone in the state. I really would. It's just a great place, and I wish you all the best of luck to continue making West Bridgewater Schools some of the best. So, thank you for all of you guys.
Thank you. All right, next up is our student rep update. Maddie.
All right, at the middle senior high school, this week we're holding our pride week with competitions between grades on Thursday and Friday, along with the middle school academic bowls. Our winner teams had competitive seasons with a few teams still in the hunt for championship. The boys varsity basketball team will take on Randolph High School Wednesday night in Randolph. The girls four by fifty-five meter relay will head to the track at, at New Balance on Saturday for the nationals. We wish both the teams good luck. On March fifteenth, we'll be holding our first career fair from twelve to two. Mr. WB is this Friday at seven PM. We look forward to seeing who will be crowned Mr. WB twenty twenty-three. Our amazing drama club will be presenting Legally Blonde. Performances will be held at seven PM on March thirty-first and at two PM and seven PM on April first. At the Howard School, the Howard School held their monthly Wildcat Pride Assembly this past Friday. All grade levels presented on what empathy means to them and shared their learning with the entire student body. The students did a fantastic job presenting, and kudos to all of them. This month's theme is perseverance. The Howard School Student Council and Little Leo's Club will be holding a grade four and five dance this Thursday, March eighth, from two forty-five to four fifteen, and a grade six dance on Thursday, March sixteenth, from two forty-five to two, to four fifteen. PTO in collaboration with Fun Run will be providing a DJ for both dances. At the Roseau McDonald and Spring Street School, the McDonald's and Spring Street Schools recognized Reed Across America last week with a Fun Spirit Week. Students enjoy dressing up as their favorite superhero athlete, wearing animal prints, pajamas, and everyone's favorite wacky day. It was great to see everyone's creativity. The McDonald's Winter Reading Challenge is well underway. As of Thursday, March second, the students have read a total of five hundred twenty-nine minutes. Second grade is currently in the lead position, reading the most amount of time and having the highest reading time for the number of students in that grade. We will continue our reading incentive program through Friday, March tenth. The grade that reads the most will receive a special award. Our third grade students at McDonald's School have been volunteering to run our morning announcement routine. Starting after February break, a third grader comes down each day, Tuesday through Friday, and greets the school, does the pledge of allegiance, announces student birthdays, and reports any important information. We're lucky to have such confident and helpful students. Both kindergarten and preschool registration is open for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Preschool registration will be open through March twenty-fourth, and kindergarten registration is ongoing. Both can be found on the school's webpage.
Great, thank you very much. Nice job. Have a good night, Maddie. All right, moving right along. Under business, we have the REEDS Collaborative Agreement Amendment, which is a voting issue. On January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Regional Educational Assessment and Diagnostic Services, AKA REEDS, Board of Directors amended their collaborative agreement, which is scheduled to become effective as of July first, twenty twenty-three, pending approvals. The updated agreement was in our packet, online in our Google folder. So I'd like to make a motion to agree to the terms outlined in the amendment of the REEDS Collaborative Agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So moved. And then the next is also a voting issue, our school calendar. The twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar is, we're given a copy at our last meeting, and an updated copy is also in our packets. I'd like to make a motion to accept the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Looks good. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Moving right along, Inclusion Matters, Mrs. Dragonetti.
Thank you. The mission of Inclusion Matters as West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s, and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system, and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians, and families. Please mark your calendars for our upcoming event, Sexuality One O One, How to Talk with Kids and Teens with Disabilities. Talking with our kids and teens about sexuality can be hard, especially when they have special needs. Join Inclusion Matters and the East Bridgewater CPAC as we host Tiffany Goffre-Fitz. Tiffany is associated with As I Am Learning, a training program that teaches individuals with intellectual disabilities key sexuality concepts to help them understand who they are as a person. Come learn how to start and continue conversations we need to have with our kids and teens about privacy, healthy bodies, healthy relationships, and sex. This event will be held on Tuesday, March fourteenth, at six o'clock PM via Zoom. In the words of Arthur Chan, diversity is a fact, equity is a choice, inclusion is an action, and belonging is an outcome. For more information about Inclusion Matters and upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Great, thank you very much. Next up is policies. Again, Mrs. Dragonetti.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to open the following policies for review at our April meeting. And they are DDA, Funding Proposals and Applications, DID, Annual Inventory, KHA, Public Solicitations in the Schools, GBA, Equal Employment Opportunity, GBEB, Staff Conduct, GGG, Workplace Weapons, GBGE, Domestic Violence Leave Policy, GBGF, Family and Medical Leave, GBI, Staff Participation in Political Activities, GBJ, Personnel Records, and GBK, Staff Complaints and Grievances. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? These are just cross-reference policies. We keep moving through our timeline. Our goal is to get a hundred, or, I'm sorry, a third of the policy index done in a year, so we're on track. We needed to bump it up a little this month.
And with the D policies, well, I think this will close those out.
Yes, we'll close out all the D policies, so that'll.
Closing out D and working our way through G.
Check that.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. And then in terms of our policies that we have open, so I'm gonna make two motions on these. The first, I'm gonna move to adopt policy DEC, Federal Funds Supplement, Not Supplant Policy, as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yep, so this is a new policy for the index. It addresses the utilization of federal grant funds to supplement instructional programs, basically.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, move to adopt the following policies. DA, Fiscal Management Goals, DKC, Expense Reimbursements, GBEA, Staff Ethics Conflict of Interest, GBEBC, Gifts to and Solicitations by Staff, GBEBD, Online Fundraising and Solicitations Crowdfunding, and KCD, Public Gifts to the School, as written and revised. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
All right, so for DA, Fiscal Management Goals, this policy outlines the, the goals for the school committee as the trustees of the local, state, and federal funds allocated for the use of public education and to ensure that the funds are used widely in pursuit of the district goals. Edits were made in twenty twenty-two by MSC, and basically what we did is just did some wordsmithing. However, it's the same intent. For DKC, Expense Reimbursements, this policy addresses the expense reimbursements for both personnel and school department officials. Very minor edits were made to this, and again, just some wordsmithing. GBEA, Staff Ethics and Conflict of Interest, this policy outlines the expectations of the school committee for professional staff to be familiar with the code of ethics that applies to their profession and to adhere to it in their relationships with students, parents, and guardians, coworkers, and officials of the school district. No changes were made to this policy at all. We left it as it was. GBEBD, Online Fundraising and Solicitation Crowdfunding, this policy outlines how the school district employee shall comply to the provisions relating to the online solicitations and the use of crowdfunding services for small, for school-related purposes. We made very small edits to the existing policy. GBEBC, Gifts and Solicitations by Staff, this policy centers around the acceptance of gifts. It's broken down into four sections, gift, class gifts, gifts for school use, and also solicitations. The paragraph relating to the solicitations is new, and basically the rest of the policy was wordsmithed and revised into sections from the previous format. So we basically just clumped it into how they had it, into those four sections. KCB, Public Gifts to the School, this specifies how the grants and gifts to the school district shall be reviewed and accepted by the school committee before expenditure or use. Policy changed from the previous version, just in formatting. The previous version contained eight itemizations. We removed the itemizations and consolidated them into two paragraphs. Very, like, these were probably the most straightforward policies we've reviewed.
They all aligned with MAS C, and for the most part, there really, as Carrie said, there were really not any major changes. There was one, I think it was GBEBC, if I'm correct. I think that one looks vastly different, but the content is all there. It's just reorganized and makes a lot more sense the way that it's rewritten. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Great. Thank you. Warrant Subcommittee Report. Mrs. Dragonetti.
The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Bill warrants on February second, two thousand and twenty-three for sixty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-one cents. February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three for ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and three cents. February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three for one hundred and sixty-two thousand, forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three for eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. The following two payroll warrants, February third, two thousand and twenty-three for five hundred and sixty-one thousand, thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents, and February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three for six hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. As always, all warrants are public record and once signed are available in the Slackman's office for review.
Great, thank you very much. Next up is public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Seeing none, we will move right on, along to the calendar. District-wide, there will be a half-day on March eighth and April fifth, and there will be no school on Good Friday on April seventh. Upcoming district meetings include the superintendent's coffee hour on March seventeenth. There'll be a PTO meeting on April fifth at seven o'clock in the RLM CAF. The athletic boosters meeting will be held March eighth. Actually, I believe that was just switched because of the basketball game. It's now the fifteenth, yep. At seven o'clock in the middle high school learning commons. And there'll be a music boosters meeting on March twentieth at six o'clock in the middle senior high school band room. At the Spring Street School, the kindergartners will take a field trip to the Zeitarian Theater on March twenty-first, and the Scholastic Book Fair will be held on March twenty-seventh. At the Roseau McDonald School, the Magic of Books Program for grades one through three will be held on March ninth, and they will have their Scholastic Book Fair on March thirtieth. Howard's Book Fair will be held on March twenty-ninth, and there'll be a principal coffee hour at eight thirty AM on March thirtieth. On March thirty-first, a program on Albert Einstein for grade five will take place, and grade six MCAS ELA will take place on April fourth and sixth, and grade five MCAS ELA will take place on April tenth. At the middle senior high school, on March first through March eighth, Mr. WB ticket sales will be held during Power Block, will be sold during Power Block in the CAF. On March seventh, spring sports signups will be taking place during Power Block. March ninth and tenth will be Middle School Spirit Week, and March sixth through March tenth is the High School Spirit Week. March tenth will be the great show of Mr. WB at seven o'clock here in the auditorium at the high school. March thirteenth, there'll be a Europe trip parent meeting in the auditorium at five forty-five. March sixteenth is World Culture Night in the CAF at four o'clock. March thirty-first, the middle schoolers will be going near the Franklin, Franklin Park Zoo. March thirty-first will also be Captain's Breakfast. March thirty-first and April first will be the Spring Musical, Legally Blonde. And on April sixth, there'll be a unified basketball. And on April sixth, there'll be a Unified Basketball Game at four forty-five PM. Our next school committee meeting will be this Thursday, March sixth, at six o'clock here in the Learning Commons. And then we did have on the agenda the option to adjourn and go back into executive session and not to reconvene in open meeting, but we determined that the executive session is not necessary. So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a good night. Thank you.